So our first agenda item relates to elections. This is the Monroe County Board of Commissioners work session. And so we'll start with Ms. Brown, who has joined us today.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to follow up on your recent appearance at an election board meeting and your subsequent request for a better understanding of the space needs at Election Central. And I thank you for the opportunity to update you and the public regarding these issues. On last Monday, I had the privilege of meeting with Indiana Secretary of State Holly Sullivan as she navigates her way across the entire state to meet with all 92 county clerks. My team and I welcomed her to Monroe County and offered her a tour of Election Central. We discussed election needs and challenges that we faced prior to and during the pandemic when we facilitated both the 2016 and 2020 presidential elections. As we go forward, and in my capacity as Chair for the Clerks Association's Legislative Committee, I took the liberty of asking Secretary Sullivan if there was anything that she would like for me to share with other county clerks. She relayed that while we may not always agree, all of Indiana's county clerks could count on her in wavering support for common sense, nonpartisan legislation that supports free and fair elections. In that same vein, I am here today in my capacity as Monroe County Clerk in the hopes of taking just a few minutes of your valuable time to level set, review our space needs at Election Central, address your inquiries regarding our needs going forward, and appeal to what I believe are our commonly shared interests for common sense solutions and best practices when it comes to serving the voters of Monroe County and overseeing free and fair elections. In short, I am asking you to acknowledge that with all there is to overseeing elections, which include but are not limited to election day voting and tabulation, absentee and early voting, voter registration, poll worker training, and records and storage needs, given that some election and voter registrations must be kept in perpetuity. Piecemeal space allocations dedicated to those efforts serve neither the best interests of Monroe County nor its registered voters. I would respectfully submit that the pandemic only magnified the space constraints with which we already grapple at Election Central and to which I previously put the board in remembrance. During what, at the time, was the worst part of the pandemic, the number of people gathered in any one area at any one time was limited by Governor Holcomb's executive orders. Because you cannot run an election from home, we were incredibly grateful to the board for the use of various locations within Monroe County government, while the employees who regularly worked there were in a position to work remotely when we were not. This includes the use of the Nat U-Hill Meeting Room and the probation and community corrections offices on the bottom level of the Johnson Hardware Building. More specifically, those offices located on the other side of the wall between Election Central and the probation and community corrections offices. My team and I expressed our gratitude in real time and to each of you for your generosity. The additional workspace allowed us to more effectively process an unprecedented number of applications to vote by mail, as well as the actual absentee and early voting ballots while staying in compliance with the governor's directives, keeping in mind that bipartisan teams were required for every step of the process, of which there are 17, from the originating requests for ballots until all ballots were scanned and tabulated after the polls closed on Election Day. We were then and continue to be incredibly grateful to you for your generosity. However, even coming from a place of gratitude, that gratitude did not negate the need to expand our existing accommodations within the Johnson Hardware Building. To the extent possible, for the entirety of 2020, I chose to do more with less so that you, as a board, could focus on navigating our county through the pandemic and I could focus on overseeing the election. So much so, that during the general election, some of my employees worked out of the back of a rented U-Haul truck parked in front of Election Central during early voting in an effort to limit the number of people inside of Election Central at any one time and make more room for our valued absentee workers and voters. While I am hopeful that we are on the path to a post-pandemic era, currently and collectively, we are in the untenable predicament of having become anesthetized to working in smaller and more confined spaces. I do not have a crystal ball, but I feel confident in saying going forward, Monroe County employees who assist with elections, valued poll workers, Monroe County voters, election vendors, and the inquiring public will no longer feel completely comfortable or confident in performing their duties while being compressed into smaller accommodations and within close proximity of their bipartisan counterparts. My predecessors and I have each faced similar challenges when it comes to having adequate space in order to facilitate successful elections in Monroe County. I hope to be the last Monroe County clerk during my lifetime to have to appear before the Board of Commissioners requesting expansion efforts to accommodate election and voter registration duties. And I will humbly admit to being 53 years of age. For historical context and the benefit of your meeting minutes, please allow me to remind you that I began approaching Monroe County Commissioners about space needs following the 2016 presidential elections. Admittedly, initially, I did most of my advocacy for expansion off-camera and outside of public meetings with hopes that we could avert this critical juncture. However, I have appeared before the board in your Commissioners' conference room located in the courthouse regarding these issues. From my behind, following my behind-the-scenes efforts and at my direction, my election supervisor began attending weekly Commissioner meetings and took advantage of opportunities to participate during public comments on several occasions. I am sure that I am preaching to the choir when I tell you that we are indeed at a critical juncture on two fronts. Nationally, you have only to turn on any television news channel to find that coverage about the very integrity of election results are being challenged. It is my office that supplies the election results for Monroe County. Locally, we face a number of Herculean tasks when it comes to redistricting and/or annexation efforts that are forthcoming. These tasks will require bipartisan teams and ample workspace to address any ramifications that come as a result of those efforts. Couple those issues with ever-changing election law, legislation, and procedural updates. In short, county clerks have more than enough components to juggle without having to factor in multiple locations and spaces when overseeing elections. I neither anticipate clerk needs nor the number of registered voters we serve in Monroe County diminishing as we navigate future elections. Architecture 101 calls for everything to be contained under one roof. Currently, election-related items are under no fewer than five roofs. I submit that none of your bathrooms are located in someone else's home, none of your kitchens, none of your bedrooms, et cetera. And my request for expansion at the Johnson Hardware Building goes to the very heart of election security in Monroe County. With that, I thank you again for your time. I look forward to answering your preliminary questions and I welcome the opportunity to continue these discussions at your public meeting next week. Thank you.
You're muted, Julie.
Oh, that's right. Ollie was barking. Thank you, Clerk Brown. We appreciate having you here today. And comments? Questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I have a question. I was just wondering if this request had originated with the election board?
My election board and I have discussed our space issues and that's been an ongoing conversation.
Commissioner Githens?
Yeah, we have to balance a lot of different things. And so part of that is figuring out where all the departments go. And as we all are aware, it's hard to acquire new space close to the rest of the county building. So I heard a request for the Johnson Hardware Building. Does that mean all of it or all of the first floor? Or what does that mean?
I would be asking for the entirety of the building, but understand that logistical issues might might result in our needing to acquire a bit at a time until such time as we acquired the entire building.
Thank you.
So my question is about some specifics. And I wonder if this is something that y'all can email to us. This is something that, just trying to figure out how we can best serve, obviously, your office, but especially the voters of Monroe County. One of the things we know that we don't want to do is we don't want to start moving early voting and voter registration, Election Central, all over to various county buildings.
We do not.
Yeah, so that's the first thing we know. So one of the things that we've done is we have sent, we have offered additional space during election time. In 2020, we were asked to renovate the space and we did so very quickly to make sure that you had the room that you needed. And, you know, we never know what an election is going to be in terms of turnout. But there are various components. One is the day-to-day operations, which go on whether it's an election year or not. There's storage, as you mentioned. There is early voting, which can be done in multiple locations if the election board so chooses. So if we could get some more specifics about, for example, square footage estimates, that's what we're really looking for.
So I have, I do have a couple of things. One, I had members of my team get the square footage that we believe going forward, we will need for poll worker training. So, for example, I recently hosted another county clerk and we went from Election Central, after I gave him a tour of that location, over to Showers to show him the different spaces where I have where I have equipment. And on the way, we happened to pass the classroom that my colleague, who oversees poll worker training, that she used. And frankly, I was embarrassed when I realized how small it was. We had been using it and very generously and graciously using it because that was what we were offered. But it is incredibly tiny and I just cannot imagine that anybody will ever again, in our lifetimes, want to be that up close and personal. We had voting equipment in there, the PowerPoint equipment in there. We had the tables and things set up. And I would go over there for as many poll worker trainings as I could to thank our valued poll workers and things. But we simply won't be able to utilize that. And as I've mentioned in other correspondence and discussions with you, we genuinely tried to make the best possible use out of the out of the space that you offered us at the Showers Building. We found in 2016 that the costs were simply prohibitive when no one wanted to take advantage of that space. We would tell them in real time, there is a space just on the other side, the north end of Showers. And no one wanted to leave the line. I believe I've also put you in remembrance that the parking was terrible. They were stealing, the people who worked there every day, who didn't appreciate parking being designated for our voters, were stealing the signs and taking and just making it very difficult to host our voters. If you insisted that we find someplace, to me, what makes the most sense would be in the Johnson Creamery across the street because then at least we could point and they could visually see that that space was close enough in proximity to Election Central. But keep in mind, the more satellites we have, that exponentially increases the number of people that we have to hire to work for us. It's double the people if you have two, triple the people if you have three. I'm no mathematician, but I think you get my point there.
We understand. Yep, that's, yeah, that's, we've been through many elections and we do understand that that does increase the cost.
And so that space, the ideal space that we ended up using for poll worker training was 2,200 square feet of space. That was two event spaces in the convention center that were combined that allowed plenty of room to have the machines in there for the poll workers to practice on. Plenty, allowed for plenty of social distancing, keeping those poll workers socially distanced from the trainer. I did go over there several times each day when I could break away to thank our poll workers. And so going forward, it's that kind of space that we are going to need for poll workers and anybody, frankly, to feel comfortable working together. And then our early voting site has 3,401 square feet. That classroom that I was mentioning earlier that would now be untenable was only 400 square feet. I live in 600 square feet and I've outgrown that and I live alone. So the square footage for the Johnson Hardware, the first floor is 6,500, the second floor is 6,500, for a total of 1,300, I'm sorry, 13,000 square feet. And as I mentioned, my, everything election-related, there are at least five roofs under which those items sit. I'm hopeful that helped you. I'm not a mathematician, but gave you some idea with respect to the numbers.
Right. So I guess, but what we, I think what we were looking for, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, is is a sense of square footage needs for storage and whether that has to be temperature-controlled or not. Square footage needs for early voting and whether multiple locations or one. And your day-to-day operations clearly work in the space that you have, right? So we're just trying to get a sense of how, you know, if we could get an email, that would be great because you're giving us lots of numbers, which is awesome. But we have a lot to talk about because everything we do impacts every other department, as you know. So we're just looking for very specific requests for very specific information. It looks like we have a couple people who wish to speak. So let's give folks a chance. We'll go first to Mr. Cockrell. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think I wanted to kind of just step in and say, you know, I think speaking with, and I've talked with some of the clerk staff as well, I think what really needs to happen is that the election board and the county commissioners kind of go through this process of what space is available. And I know we've talked a lot about a square footage of buildings and things like that. I think one of the items that I think I've heard from staff is parking. I want to make sure, you know, you know, let's get a list of everything that's needed. I also would point out that the Johnson Hardware Building has been utilized by Community Corrections for at least a decade prior to when we purchased it. They've had their ongoing business going on there for quite a bit of time. And to have a conversation about the use of that building, we probably would need to have them included in understanding what their needs are and those kind of things if we were going to do something. To me, I think the best way to start is let's get what everybody needs and then try to figure out where the pieces go as opposed to looking at specific buildings right now. I mean, we can come to conclusions when we come to conclusions, but getting all the, all the needs on the table and then trying to allocate them makes sense to me. And again, I think that's a conversation that we need to have with the, that the Commissioners would need to have with the election board and talk to the Community Corrections folks.
And sir, I certainly don't dispute that other offices are impacted. Our office was impacted when we were moved from the Curry Building to the Johnson Hardware Center when the previous clerk made sure that the Commissioners understood that that space wasn't HAVA compliant and wasn't going to serve the needs, the long-term needs. And at the Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners at the time, which I don't believe included any of you, but might have included Commissioner Thomas, she would have been coming on as Commissioner Kiesling would have gone off, reassured her that they would make sure that things were okay. And I don't know how many people are on Community Corrections or probation. I just know that I am not. But what I can tell you is that we serve 100,000, just under 100,000 registered voters. I don't believe, and I'm no mathematician, I don't believe we have 100,000 people on Community Corrections or probation. And as you rightly pointed out, the work goes on whether we have an election or not. We still have to do mailings. We still have things that we have to do to serve the voters. Thank you.
Okay. We have Mr. Hal Turner on. He is a member of the election board. I wanted to give him a chance to weigh in. Good morning, Mr. Turner.
Good morning. Good morning. And it's a pleasure to speak to you all today and to follow the comments from Clerk Brown. I'll keep this very short because I know there's a lot of information we've already covered. But I want to say that as current Chair of the election board and as Chair of the election board during the last major election in 2020, I just wanted to say that the the election board and the clerk staff did an outstanding job considering the number of motivated voters that we had in the last election. We had lines around four sides of the block. We processed a voter every 45 seconds and still could not keep up with the demand. We did have to make accommodations to COVID, but I don't believe those accommodations would be significantly different than the accommodations we would have in a major election that motivated voters the way this one did. I don't think this is the last motivated election we're going to have. Things seem to be fairly partisan these days and I think that's going to continue in the future and increase our need to process voters even faster. Second to that, I just want to say that as a member of the election board, one of our primary concerns is ensuring the integrity of the vote. We did a number of audits after the last election and we came up clean on that. So I'm very thankful for that. However, when we go to multiple locations with ballots, we raise the risk of ballot custody, that there would be a break in that chain of custody. And when that happens, it raises doubts, whether they're reasonable doubts or not. I think the value of an irrefutably honest election needs to have all of these functions in one location. Whenever we move it, it's a risk. I will talk to the rest of the election board and the staff about gathering the information you've requested. We want to make sure that you have all the information you need to make the proper decision. Absolutely. But I want to say I agree 100% with what Clerk Brown had to say today. And that's all I'm going to say. I won't take any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Turner. We appreciate that. And absolutely, we are so, we have been, over the course of many election cycles, been so impressed with the work of everyone to keep these elections running smoothly. And we know how important this is and this is our democracy. So we do want to find a permanent solution. We want to keep the goalposts from moving. We want to be able to find the space that can grow as our voter rolls grow, which is always the hopeful thing, would be if we had a huge turnout every election. So anything that we can get statistically, information-wise, is going to help us with this decision. And so we really appreciate the thought that's gone into it so far. Other comments? Questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'll just reiterate what a couple other people have said, that we are in charge of space for all departments in the county and there isn't a single department that doesn't believe that they could use more space. We do see the value of having Elections Central all in one place. It's certainly helpful to the voters and that is the ultimate goal. Whether that can be achieved instantly, well, that's a little unlikely. But it is a goal that we're working toward.
Thank you. Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate hearing about the ballot security, but I still would like to have a better breakdown of what's needed permanently when it's not election time and then what's needed during both early election and Election Day kinds of things and the training part of it. I know that both Commissioner Thomas and I, and I don't know about Commissioner Jones, I haven't talked to her about this, but we have worked at elections. And so we've gone through those trainings. We know what that's like. And that's a critical part of it as well. We're not ignoring that. But so I would like to know what's needed day-to-day and then for elections specifically.
Yeah, I not only worked at elections as Democratic Party Chair, I was very involved in elections.
Yep.
And knew pretty much every aspect of them.
Yeah, yeah. And that's so important. You know, and this, and that's part of the consideration, right? We don't want to have storage downtown, right? Storage downtown is a misuse of space, of valuable space. So, you know, there are, these components have to be looked at and considered as they relate to what is needed during early voting, what is needed every day, what is needed for storage, what is needed for training, what is, you know, whatever those questions are. And so, and we know and we appreciate that elections have a lot of moving parts and a lot of needs. And we are, continue to do everything we can to ensure that, that we provide all of the infrastructure and space that's needed. But we just need some real clarity and we need to talk through what we have for space and the best way to move forward. But with that information, that will help us a great deal. So we do appreciate Clerk Brown. Thank you so much for being here. Mr. Turner, as a member of the election board, thank you for your service and thank you for being here. And we look forward to continuing this conversation and we appreciate that. It looks like there's some hands raised, but this is really not an opportunity for public comment. So let's, hopefully, we can get folks who are interested in commenting to attend the next election board meeting or to send us an email. But let's go on because we have an agenda here that's pretty long. And let's go ahead and hear from And let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Schilling on Monroe County Code Chapters 1154 and 1155. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you very much. This is sort of a housekeeping item. We've got some changes to make to, or propose to Chapter 115 of the code, which is about enforcement and penalties. So we've proposed some changes to Section 4 of Chapter 115 that basically spell out the enforcement practices that the county has used for decades. We just want to make it clear in the ordinance, the practices that we've always followed. So we put those practices, we've committed them to writing and added them in here to Section 4. Section 5 of Chapter 115 deals with the Ordinance Violations Bureau, and that's where the county has the authority to issue administrative fines for violations of the ordinance. And so we have a list of the ordinances or the ordinance provisions that can be subject to the fining procedure, the amounts of the fine that is associated with each violation and the department that has the authority to issue the fines. And so to that schedule, we are essentially just adding the illicit discharge ordinance. Previously, we've always had the stormwater ordinance in that schedule, but we've never had the illicit discharge. And so stormwater would now have the authority to go out and write fines for an illicit discharge. For example, if a cement truck operator was hosing out the inside of his truck or his vehicle and letting that water go into a drainage way, that would be an illicit discharge that a fine could be written for. And then finally, we've added language to authorize highway and planning inspectors to issue citations or violation notices for ordinances, for planning ordinances as well as the stormwater ordinances. There's a lot of overlap in some of those areas with respective sinkholes and grading. So both the inspectors have knowledge of what the requirements of the zoning are and what the requirements of the stormwater are. So if a stormwater inspector is out there and notices a grading issue under the zoning code, they could issue a citation if if the planning is out inspecting the site and they see an illicit discharge, they could issue a citation as well. So it's sort of a force multiplier and allows the both of those inspectors from both departments to issue citations for the other departments. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think it's wonderful that we're going to be allowing inspectors from both departments to issue citations. Both departments. It allows us to probably get along with fewer inspectors and they end up doing a much more thorough job.
Commissioner Giffens? Oh, you are muted.
In what was sent to us in the packet on page seven, line where it has 767, it says stormwater management ordinance illicit discharge prohibition and it would be under highway, but it doesn't give an amount for the fine.
Yes.
Will we see that next week?
The amount for the fine, I think, is addressed in the first paragraph at C.
Okay.
So it says, if no dollar amount is indicated as a penalty for a code provision listed on the schedule, the enforcement officer may determine the amount of the penalty to charge within their range 25 to 250 based on their determination.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if it had to be repeated in that list. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think this is going to be, you know, really important development for us and especially for our stormwater department. I know that this is, it's going, it's very important to be able to have some sort of ability to sanction misbehavior because it impacts so many people. It's, so this is going to be an important step forward. Is this something that what is the next step in this process? Does this need to go to Stormwater Board? We are actually meeting at three o'clock today. Or does this?
If you, if you like, but it's really just a commissioner's agenda item.
Could you raise this?
Yes.
At the meeting today? That I think would be helpful. Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good. Just there's comments from anybody who's attending that meeting. Yeah. And then, yeah, so anybody object to having this on our agenda next week? I need to, I skinned it, so I will definitely read it again and let you know if I see anything that I have questions about.
Thank you.
Language wise or whatever. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. And next, we have here Mr. Cockrell with a number of items of analysis.
No, I hope there's not a huge number because I only have one.
I see sustainability analysis, capital improvement plan, budget and general financial. That's a lot.
That is, if you look down in the packet, that is one agreement. All those separate, separate things in it. So, okay, so I'm prepared to talk about that. And just kind of as a background, and I think you guys have seen that we've gotten two quotes for this work. Kind of the, and we, this is a sustainability plan that we've, that I've looked at with some of the council members off and on for a number of years. When we, when I started looking at with some of the council members, it was purely for the day when we, we need to issue some larger bonds and we needed to make sure we had all these in place for our bond rating to be at least the same, if not better than what we have currently. It includes things like looking at revenues, looking at expenditures, having policies in place as to here is why our fund balances. Here are what we want our minimum fund balances to be, you know, all kind, a litany of questions that are really under the the council's purview and policies for the councils to make. So that's one component of it. And that includes a review of our 2019 and 2020 revenues, which is highly important right now for our American Rescue Plan Fund Act review to see, you know, what are our lost revenues for that time period? It also includes reviewing our capital improvement plans. We currently have a capital asset plan. And so this goes hand in hand in this. And I think this may be beneficial to like Greg Crone, who looks at a lot of our buildings, but to just kind of look at our capital improvement plans to kind of help us foresee future capital needs. And then there are some debt management plans and those kind of things. I will say of the two quotes, this one was this one is not to exceed for all the work of 25,000, which is 20,000 less than the not to exceed the other quote we received. So the other one was 45,000 not to exceed. I, speaking with the Audit's Office, they're comfortable with working with this vendor. We've worked with them in the past. So they have a pretty good relationship. And so they're comfortable moving forward that way. Talked to the council leadership yesterday. They indicated that they wanted to move forward with this. We did talk about funding and they have, there isn't an available appropriation yet. So what I'd ask for you, if you guys are comfortable approving this today, approve it contingent upon an appropriation being approved by the county council. There's debate whether that would be with the auditor or with the council office themselves. I think the Audit's Office would really like to get this going for that American Rescue Plan Fund Act review. So that would be the time urgency for getting it approved now as opposed to next week.
Okay. Sorry, I'm still, I don't see a cover sheet for this. I'm still looking. I don't see it.
I don't, I don't think I prepared a cover sheet because I didn't get the word from the council until later yesterday.
I'm still.
If you were to make a motion, I would make it as a motion to approve proposal relating to sustainability analysis, capital improvement plan, budget and general financial consulting on an as-needed basis with an amount not to exceed $25,000, which approval is subject to council appropriation of the funds.
Right. Now, I thought I saw in the paperwork, it says not to exceed 20,000. Sorry, I don't mean to be.
Well, there are three different components.
Right.
The first component is not to exceed 20. The second component is not to exceed three, and the third component is not to exceed five. But if you do the full package as opposed to à la carte, exceed is 25.
That's where I was going. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Cause I was I was like, I know that's closer to 30 than it is to 25. Okay. So all right, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement with FSG. And this would be contingent on council appropriation. This is a proposal related to sustainability analysis, capital improvement plan, budget and general financial consulting on an as-needed basis for an amount not to exceed $20,000. Did I get it all?
Twenty, not to exceed 25,000.
$25,000. Thank you. I got myself confused.
Second.
So for this, because this is about, we can take public comment. Obviously, we'll bring this back to be ratified next week if it passes today. And if you wish to make public comment, please raise your hand. I don't see anyone. Other comments, questions? Commissioner Jones or Giffens?
No, this seems like a very prudent action at this time.
All right. So Mr. Cockrell, you want to call a roll on this item?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. And did you have anything else for us today, Mr. Cockrell?
I do not believe so.
Okay. All right. Ms. Purdy, what do you have for us?
Yeah, hi there. What I have is in relation to the health administrators conversation that she had with us earlier this morning during the formal meeting about the increase in COVID positivity, the Delta variant. And so what we have proposed here is modification to our current continuity operations plan that basically references the employee department heads to look to the Center for Disease Control and the local health commissioner and health board as well as the Board of Commissioners. Because things change relatively quickly by the, by the CDC sometimes. This is the easiest way to approach the needs for our employees and our public.
Okay. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I really appreciated the fact that you highlighted the proposed changes that made things much easier for me.
Me too.
It stands out. All right.
Yeah.
So is this something that we need to vote on and ratify, Mr. Cockrell? Can we just vote on it today? What do we need to do with this?
I think you could vote on it today. I think it's an internal administrative document. I think it needs to be approved at a public meeting, but I don't think it needs to be ratified. It was published on the agenda for today. So I think any of the public would have had a chance to look at it.
Great. Let's go ahead and see if we have any comments or questions from the public. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none. Other comments, questions? My colleagues? All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you. Let's see if there's anything else from other departments or Ms. Purdy, anybody else have anything for us?
I believe Margie, she posted that she has a couple of two quick issues.
Okay, Ms. Rice, please.
I just wanted to ask you a couple of things. I am going to bring to you an agreement next week. As you know, you accepted bids for the assessor for her cyclical reassessment. We only received one bid for services. So I will be bringing to you a service contract with Nexus. The total for the four-year cost is going to be 1,570,000. That works out to be 392,500 a year and will be paid with reassessment funds. But I wanted to know just to let you know that I'm going to be bringing that next week and to see if you have any questions today or ask that you send me any questions you might have. So I can get those answers before next week.
Okay.
It's the same vendor we have received bids from in the past and who we currently have a contract with.
Okay.
So if nobody has any questions, the next issue, I just wanted to see, we've had a lot of, Penny spoke today about the health department and the mask mandate. And I just want to see if you guys had any questions about that.
My colleagues have questions?
From, I guess, from a legal perspective. Jeff and I have talked and we're on the same page and, and we will, as I told the council last night, they sometimes get emails with questions about these matters and jurisdictional or legal issues. And I would encourage that if you guys get any questions like that, you just direct them to County Legal.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rice. We appreciate hearing from you. All right, anyone else? I don't see anyone else. So with that, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is August 18th, 10:00 a.m. on Zoom. Thanks, everyone. Be well. Get vaccinated.